Call to order the regular common council meeting Tuesday, September 4th, 7:00 PM. Rule call.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Olson is excused. Next item is pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Confirmation of appropriate meeting notice.
Meeting was noticed on Friday, August 31st. Agendas were posted at the post office library in City Hall.
Council acceptance of the agenda?
Most to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next item is personal appearances for non-agenda items. For anyone that wishes to speak on something that's not on the agenda, please state your name and address for the record. And for yours. You want a microphone?
I'm worth.
Could we give you a microphone so we can pick up the recording? Otherwise it doesn't.
Can we get?
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name's Tom Worth. I'm here with my wife Marcia, as well as Bill and Kathy Olsted. We're here to discuss the same issue. I live at 410 First Street and they live at 409 First Street. We're here to discuss the daycare center that's in the Vets Building. Essentially, the noise level that we have with that daycare. We have done some emailing and texting to the city about that fact. And bottom line is that the police did come out five times to measure noise levels. We don't know when they came out, what time they came out, the dates, or how long they came out. And our contention is that they probably weren't there long enough to get a real indication of how much noise does occur in the play area. The play area happens to be in our backyard, basically. We are the ones that are right there behind the daycare. And it is such that it really is a distraction to us. We end up going inside sometimes to get rid of the noise. I put headphones on. It is definitely an issue that bothers all of us because it happens on a quite regular basis. The kids are out generally five, five and a half times, sometimes six hours a day from at least 9:30 till noon and at least 2:30 until 5:00, 5:30. Sometimes it's longer than that depending upon the weather. So, you know, five to six hours a day, Monday through Friday. It's just gotten to the point where it's not tolerable for us. We've put up with that for a long time and, you know, at this point, we're pretty sick and tired of it. We feel that the police recording five times for an undetermined amount of time just really isn't going to give the full story of the noise that does occur because it does come and go. It's quiet at times and then it gets extremely loud. The employees there don't do a great job of keeping them under control as far as noise level is concerned. You know, we hear from them occasionally when somebody's going to start crying, et cetera. But other than that, you know, they pretty much feel that it's a recess for that five or six hours every day. So, you know, we're here to just point that out. I think a better solution for noise level would be to have the noise meter there for an extended period of time, just to let it sit there and get a real idea of what kind of noise does occur because it does come and go and there are times when it's intolerable. I don't know if there's anything else I can think of. Would you like to add anything?
I think so.
Bill? Kathy? I guess I said it.
I second. Very thoughtful.
Thank you. Would you like to meet after the meeting tonight and see if we can set something up?
Are you okay?
Some other time maybe?
Should be a possibility.
Hopefully by half hour or so.
Sure. Half hour? That would be fine.
Okay. Anyone else that wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay. We'll move on to the minutes from August 20th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Finance Committee, Mark.
I'm going to make a motion to approve bills and payroll on the amount of $268,857.17.
Second.
Any questions on the bills?
Yeah, you on last page, page 13, NSA Denert and Company Contractors. What's that for?
It's that housing program?
Oh.
Rule call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There are no licenses tonight, so I'll move on to three and I'll make a motion to adopt City of Edgerton Resolution 1418, amendment to 2018 salary resolution to increase crossing guard wages.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, that came on the public safety. We met last Monday and we decided to increase the wage per incident, like in the morning and afternoon. And I'll let them make now nine or something. We're going to increase it to $15 every time they need. Hopefully we'll gather and get more people.
Anyone else? Rule call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Epstein.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All I have for finance.
Thank you. Plan Commission, there's a couple of things here.
You want me to go? Okay. Plan Commission met the 27th and I'll make a motion for approval of a preliminary certified survey map to combine lots 112 and 113 of Winfield Third Edition, 920 and 930 Hayne Road.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Rule call.
Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 1218, approving the final certified survey map to combine lots 112 and 113 of Winfield Third Edition.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Rule call.
Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve extraterritorial land division for peace land development, North Hillside Drive and East Maple Beach Drive, Section 1, Town of Fulton, to create 48 lots. Second.
Any discussion?
Jim, did you second that?
Rule call.
Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve extraterritorial land division for Teresa Griffin on Indian Trail, Section 36, Town of Elbien, number 10172.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Rule call.
Davis?
Yes.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that's it for Plan Commission.
Thank you. Public Safety, anything else?
No, this one has under agenda.
Next item is to consider adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 1318, authorizing resolution for the WDNR Urban and Community Forestry Project Grants and the Urban Forestry Catastrophic Storm Projects Grants.
I'll make a motion. I do so.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Catastrophic storm kind coming in handy lately here. Rule call.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Next item is to discuss and consider introducing and approving the first reading of the City of Edgerton Ordinance 18-06 Charter Ordinance Amendment to Section 2.015 ward boundaries and aldermanic district boundaries and Section 2.02 elected officials to change electing alders from districts to at-large. We held off because we were missing an alderperson at the last meeting, but we may have people here that want to speak on this. If so, I think we'll leave the floor open for that and then we'll discuss what we want to do about the absence of Alderperson Olson.
Hi, Olson.
Right behind you is got, somebody you know there with a mic.
My name is Lisa Bensky and I live at 412 East Fulton Street. Thank you. I'm a lifelong citizen of the City of Edgerton and I would like to speak before you tonight in regards to Agenda Item 9, the introduction and first reading of Edgerton Ordinance Amendments to Section 2.015 and Section 2.02 to change electing alders from districts to at-large. I'd like to go on record in opposition of this amendment and wish to continue to elect my alders that represent me and that actually live in the same district as I do. I first read about the proposed change in the August 22nd edition of Edgerton Reporter. I must admit that I was quite surprised to see this since as one of your chief election inspectors, I am here at the polls from open to close on every election and have yet to ever hear a voter bring up this issue. I've since read the meeting minutes, the staff supply documents, and spoke directly with an alderperson on this subject. I have a strong personal involvement with politics and a special interest in the numbers game of voting and voters. And so I'm here today to let my voice be heard. I firmly believe in the right to vote and that my vote counts. I feel that I'm fairly represented by an alderperson that resides in the same jurisdictional area as I do. I believe that alderpersons care about the entire town but are able to concentrate on the area they represent and more effectively communicate with those constituents, paying attention to their opinions and needs. I do not want to see our city government turn into a popularity contest with winners chosen by familiar names or positions on the ballot. I truly believe that if a candidate is serious about running for office and representing me, they will run for that office no matter who else is on the ballot and then it is up to me to choose who I feel will do the better job. I do not believe it will encourage more people to run for office or more people to vote. I so wish our voters would educate themselves before walking into the polls, know which candidates they are voting for and why. But that is not reality and changing our system is not going to change this fact. I also do not agree that elections should be made easy or less expensive. No city should change procedures concerning my right to vote or my right for representation because of ease or cost. A change in voting structure in city government is a huge change. At the very least, I would like to see more citizen input on this subject, maybe a referendum. The result should be the wishes of the citizens. If you want more citizen involvement, we must first inform and educate our citizens. And one newspaper article and one Facebook post is just not the way to do that. Thanks for listening.
My name's Bill Olsted. Why are you doing this? Or is that a proper question at this time? Why? Who started this and why would you have five people from one area run the whole city?
It was mostly my idea for the ease of elections and for the benefit of the electorate to be able to pick, know their representatives because a lot of people don't know the boundaries and who their representative is.
You think it's going to get better doing that or?
You could use any one of them then.
I mean, there's some people that probably don't even care where I live and then I call them and they got their own problems in their own little neighborhood.
The city is pretty diverse all the way around, so the districts are, the districts have diverse in each one of them.
All right.
And if I might add too, you know, it kind of opens it up for more people to run if they're interested. Or you may have one district where nobody's really interested in running. So, I mean, you could have somebody run that doesn't necessarily live in that district to represent. It's just some thoughts.
Were involved in your jobs then?
Oh.
On the council?
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm actually, right. I actually encourage this too, but that may put us at odds, greater out of getting voted out. I mean, that's just part of the deal.
So, I know Mark is up. I'm up next April. Somebody wanted to run again? Absolutely. I think everybody should have the opportunity to run no matter where they live.
But if time and time again, you see a ballot where it's always, there's nobody running against an incumbent because there's nobody in that district that wants to run against them, but there could be somebody else across town that's willing to run.
I have to agree with Mark. My position was unopposed and I think that for all the count of instances where a position was unopposed, it's too much for a city this size. Citizen involvement would be encouraged and there's really no downside. And if downsides are articulated in a way that has numbers and metrics behind it, that's believable. But just having an emotional opinion about metrics is just, to me, not a substantial reason why people don't step up when there's a vacancy.
My opinion is to keep as is. Been doing this, me and Chris, for at least since early 90s and it's worked all throughout the years. Sometimes you only have one person, well, whatever, you know? I ran for city council against a person I liked because I wanted to run. And people said, I don't want to run against my friend. Well, if you like city government, you're going to run because you want to run. It doesn't matter where you live and stuff. That's just my opinion of it, you know? But it's, most municipalities that I researched have it district, districts and stuff. Jezz was arguing back and forth because everybody's tilted to the north side of the city and I get representation and so on. I'm not seeing it here at all because it's a small little city and so forth. But it's ran fine for the last 25. I actually ran in 1880 and stuff, you know? I'm on the streets every single day. I've never heard a person comment nothing at all to it. Anyways, but that's what the discussion is about tonight.
One more thing to think about is if you don't have enough people running, so like if somebody doesn't run and you have to try to, how do you fill that seat if nobody wants to run? If you, so if there's District 2 and there's a seat available and let's say I don't run or somebody else doesn't run, nobody runs, what do you do?
I don't know. I think McIntyre said it well. He's on the streets every day. I'm not kidding. How many of you is in New York? He has to move the street.
So, yeah, I get.
He is on the streets every day. So, we need to get more people like that.
I agree. I'm not disagreeing with, I'm saying what if you don't have somebody that does that? What if somebody doesn't want to because they live in District 2 but there's nobody in District 2 that wants to run? But let's say you have somebody in District 3 that would like to run, but there's, a District 3 seat isn't open? Why couldn't they run for District 1? You wouldn't run in that district. It would be in that large. It means there's an open seat for that person to run. So, in that situation, if you had five Matt McIntyres pounding the streets right, they could run for, he could, he or she could fill a seat in any district. That's what this is about.
Had a spot when no one was on the ballot for an election that calls.
So, we need to come on more people like Matt McIntyre.
I mean, that ain't many of what.
Cities and municipalities that have adopted an at-large system cannot cite a single instance of a problem propping up as a direct result of it.
Well, I'm not going to give into this tonight. I am going to prepare myself better for the next meeting. I am using the example of Verona, for instance. Verona's a pretty good smart city. They have a pretty cool, smooth-running city and school district, so I will hold on to my homework.
They have aldermen.
I will show you guys the difference in Edgerton and running Verona, city for example.
We're interested in cities.
I'm just going to do my homework.
Verona has city aldermanic districts. They do. And it runs just nice up there.
I mean, seven children, just in their elementary school. It's just flooding over. I probably have to leave this meeting because this city has really gotten up and, and I am using Verona because my daughter and my son-in-law and my two grandsons live there and it is the most awesome city. And maybe you guys should look it up and take an example of how they're running their city. This city is just falling apart. Okay.
Okay. Everybody else folk, let me get a quick one in here. I kind of see both sides. All right, honestly, I do. However, I feel that if there's no one interested in a district, it's our bad. It's the council's bad. I'm new, all right? But I'm going to say it's my bad for not getting word out there and trying to get somebody that wants to run to be representative of their district in the city, to sit on this council. I can't see a district where no one would want to run, but I understand there have been uncontested, well, 52% in the last 10 years have been uncontested. Maybe that's not a bad thing. What's, they're obviously doing something right if nobody wants to run against them. But if nobody in my district wants to run against me, somebody on the other side of town might want to, but why? I don't get it. I mean, what's the difference? If nobody in my district, you know? I don't, I guess I don't see, I just don't see it. And I did go out and I did pound the pavement. I hit a number of my people and they voted, well, some of them actually didn't vote for me and they told me that. So, I didn't have a problem, but they did tell me their opinions on this. So, and I've got it. And it was hands down four to one not to change. And that was, you guys, you know, a lot of the people I asked them, they probably, they didn't show up tonight. Well, a couple of them did. Thank you. But I did not get a good response to this change. And again, if nobody wants to run in my district against someone next time, I'm going to go out and find out why and get somebody to run and get somebody to be up, stand up on this council and represent the people in their district.
Since 1982, I don't know if anybody, any race has been with no ballot on it. Chris and I have been around since 92 and there's been a couple of times when, you know, some people, no one's only one person, but that's just how it goes. Chris and I run for the elected office on the chief executive side. I run just, you know, it's the same thing, citywide, only two people. So, there's logic about you get more people. Well, citywide is the mayor and only two people are running for, so that logic is good and bad. But, you know, for the last, you know, 20 years, or 10, Chris and I ran, only two people in the whole city. So, if you think if you go citywide, you get more people. Well, I haven't seen it in the last 16 years where more people than just two. So, there's points on both sides, but most municipalities have the districts where people get represented in their districts and they cover their areas a little bit more specifically in their districts even though they represent the whole city, you know? I took on a big challenge up in another side of the city because my family lived in. I represent the whole city, but I kind of like it, I don't know about all persons, where you represent a little area, you get to talk to them more specifically and tune them in in advance of something that might affect their area, like a sidewalks or some development issue. You can go to their house, sit at the kitchen table, meet them someplace, meet them at church or whatever the case is, and you can talk about the issues in their districts and you just feel kind of comfortable. So, there's a pros and cons to it, I guess, for her to talk about. Anyways, I like the leases that'll talk about it as a, been elected official for many years that, you know, had.
Very good speech by me.
Very, yeah, pretty articulate.
Okay, and I saw a hand up back there. Good evening. My name's John Stranley. I live in Blanchard Street. I lived in Edgerton for about 13 years. Lived around Edgerton for probably about 20 and you had a very nice speech, very well thought out. I'm opposed to it. I like the idea that we have an alderperson that lives in my area, not across town. You know, they may live in a newer part of town, newer subdivision. Everything's beautiful and peachy over there where the older part of town, it might not be as peachy and when I have a concern about something, I would consider it to be a complaint or something that, ah, it's no big deal. It's too bad they just lived over there. But I'm opposed to it. I think the system we have isn't broken, so why try and fix it? I think everybody here, I appreciate all of you for the time you spend on the council. I think you guys do a great job, all of you. And I would say let's worry about other things than something like this. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
The thing that I would be worried about is the underrepresented or unrepresented district when no one steps up.
I think, I think you guys should do more communication, more papers, different things get information to people. I don't, I don't see a whole lot of information, to be perfectly honest with you. And I, go ahead.
This is one of the means. The proposal that Chris has floated out there is one of the means of generating citizen involvement.
Okay, then I'm here. I'm speaking on behalf. But I feel that, I think the way it's set up now is just fine and so far, I'm pretty sure that if someone's going to go off the board and going to be done, that someone will step forward and help out with their city that's lived here a long time, that has stake involved in the city. It is a great city and I don't think it should be changed. That's my humble opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We were born and have each of you sixty-five. You're probably the oldest one.
Boy, she gives you nice compliments, Bill.
The question is actually, the question is actually age-old when it comes to representation and the definitions of representation and action taken without representation. All of those are definitions and for the newspaper to cover it with one article, yes, that is kind of paltry, but there are two more readings of this and that's where the newspaper will have some sort of something new to report, something that was not touched on the last go-around. And I think that's the process working the way it was intended.
Whatever came of the results, didn't we have something, a survey years ago? Did anybody get the results in that? I just thought about that. Anything?
We reported that the results were not available.
Okay.
At the last meeting, you may recall that, or the meeting before.
Well, this was, this was something that I wanted to make it a little more ease of the election process for the citizens and ballots, number of ballots will be reduced. It doesn't matter to me. I'm not running for council anymore. This is, this is where I'm stopping right here and I don't have to be concerned with the districts myself because this is a citywide position here. So, either way is okay with me. We have had the comment that it should be, should not be made by six people and made the comment at the last meeting that we had only five of us here at the last one, so Debbie's not here tonight. If we want to table this and.
The motion to table?
Yeah. That'd be okay.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table, there's no discussion, so rule call.
Burdick?
Yes.
Issa?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Wellnitz?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion is tabled. Might be a little more than a half hour. We've got a budget discussion coming up here, so. Next item is to discuss and consider 2019 borrowing and budget. Sure.
Sure.
Just for a little background, for those of you who haven't been through a borrowing, in 2014, the city council decided to establish the capital project expenditure, which would result in a debt service payments of $600,000 annually. Assuming the council wishes to maintain the debt, that debt level, the city would be borrowing approximately $1,050,000 in 2019 for 2018 through 2022 capital projects. We borrow once every four years. There's a schedule attached which indicates which projects could be completed with these borrowed funds. Please note that at this point, the numbers are volatile and they're also changing because of the DOT South Main project, which is a huge project for the city, as you know. So these are estimated costs and as costs fluctuate, if they come in significantly higher than many, some of these projects may have to be delayed. So we will make the decision as we move through the years to see what funds are available and what projects cost. So the decision that would be needed for this next upcoming budget is the amount to borrow in 2019 for these upcoming projects. So if the council believes the rate at which we're completing projects is too slow and that would result in potentially failing streets or equipment, the council obviously could increase the borrowing and complete additional projects. And we provided in your staff report some estimates of the implications for increased borrowing and taxes. So that's the conversation for this evening is to get a direction from the council regarding maintaining the, the policy that was established two borrowings ago to establish the borrowing resulting in a debt service of about $600,000 annually.
So as I look at the, the plan on the last page, my question is on the South Main?
Yes.
Project. So if I'm reading this right, we're talking not till 2021 to do that? For some reason, I was thinking it was gonna be done sooner.
Yes, we had initially planned, well, we've been planning it for several years, but as you may have heard us discuss, the DOT grant applications which went in last year.
Right.
They have now an entire, more than an entire year later, just after the writing of the staff report announced, they're actually going to go through those grant applications now. So they have been, based on funding debates at the state level, they have not awarded any grants for an entire year. So that pushed everything back a year. So one thing to note is that we had, and this is a two-year project. The first year is all the underground infrastructure sewer water.
Okay.
And then the second year is the street and storm sewer. And so we can't do it all in one year. It's too big of a project to do in one year. So the, the schedule has slid by a year because the whole DOT schedule slid by a year. So we'll meet as a staff this week now, we have, now that we have some DOT information regarding timing. We don't think it's possible at this point to do the utility project next year because of the state approval process in order to get everything done in time to meet that next grant year. So as of tonight, our best guess is the soonest we can do this is utilities in 2020, street in 2021. So that's where we think we are. Now, we're gonna, as I said, we, we're gonna work this week. We have this additional information that just came in from the DOT to see if there's any way we can move it back to where it was, but we think it's our best guess.
So that would be because of the grant process?
Right.
What, and I know this is just a guess. We're thinking the grant will probably come through. What if it didn't? Would this not get done?
Well, this, that project alone would be four years' worth of capital expenditures.
Yeah, okay.
That project is so huge. It's an 80-20 grant. So this 477,000 is 20% of the whole project cost. It is so huge.
Huge, but we know it has to get done, right?
Right, but that would mean you either borrow and significantly more, double your borrowing and have those tax implications, or you do that one project and then you don't do anything for four years.
So when we're talking about a two-year, you do the utilities first, so that would be done. And then would mock topping be put on it for, until the next year?
Great question. And that's part of the reason why we continue to debate at the staff level about the ability to separate these projects. And we continue to say that every year you separate them makes the burden on the sewer and water utility and those rates greater because they can't, we might be able to get through a winter with, you know, an inch mat, but a whole year or two years, we think that it's a bad investment because that money is lost then.
Right.
So that's why we, and we debated at length as to whether or not we could do utilities next year and add in the road project for two or three years. And given the unknowns at this point, we think that's a risk that we're not willing to take because we think it's gonna saddle the utilities with more costs than they should bear.
Okay. Do, do we think we could make it that since that's when we move back a year? How are we gonna make it another year on South Main the way it is now, right? It's so bad. But I mean, is that, I mean, even more asphalt doesn't seem to do it. I mean, can we have double more asphalt for another year? You know what I mean? I know you hear this all the...
Their yes is here because we're packing worse streets, so we'll be there soon.
And part of our evaluation is that, what is it costing us every year to maintain this? So that's all part of the evaluation. And we still concluded that we think going forward with utilities and having the utility have to put down, rebuild the street, basically.
Right.
You know, we, we, even the cost of what Tom's department is putting in annually, we still don't think it's a good investment. So we're, we're suggesting right now, tonight, without any additional information, sliding it by one year but keeping them adjacent to each other.
Okay. I, oh, I hate doing that, but I, I know it's probably the, the best thing to do. Hate to let it go another year. I mean, I try not even to take that. I tried going completely the opposite way, but, and I feel bad for those people that live along that road. But I'm disappointed to see that the, the grant people pushed it another year, but...
Hey, when, when we picked, Randy, we, we picked the project based on the condition of the water sewer and everything. Because you have Quigley on there for 2021 there, right up on the west, south side. So that's getting pretty bad, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, you bet. That's why I see how we're doing in Sweeney also, up at a Catholic church. That, that, that road is actually shot worse than South Main.
Road shot and so is the sewer.
Yeah, so that's, that's good that you guys picked that out. That's the logic behind it with the water sewer? Excellent. And I, I see you do have Washington Street up there. Would that be from Elba Street up to?
You could split it up now or maybe what.
Okay, I was just wondering that. Okay, cool. I, I like how you go about it with the, with the dots by it because the water sewer's involved and that's the critical part to pay in some streets. If we're gonna dig it up, the sewer's been there since the city was built, you know? Why not redo the water sewer too? So, but you're talking about that, the dollar amount, Ramona, was one, we approved it years ago, that it was $600,000. So you have in your deal to, if we do wanna do other streets in other areas of town, like just some re-milling or something like that, we would have to add up our capital budget, correct, Ramona? To increase it by another $100,000 or something or whatever.
If you wish to borrow more, that would have an attack's implication?
Yeah, right.
You can borrow almost, you know, you, we have a ton of debt capacity, so it really is your will as to how much you're willing to tax your constituents.
Somebody has to pay it back.
Right, so there isn't a statutory limit that we're anywhere near, so you could borrow more. I just, I just wanna make sure you're aware that...
Just for information for the, the public and stuff.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little concerned about borrowing more and not having some of these really terrible streets fixed for another two years out. I mean, people might say, oh, well, you're borrowing for, why can't, why don't you fix it now? You know what I mean? If we borrow a whole lot more and then they still don't see an improvement for another two years?
That's why I brought up the, the whole thing here.
People might get upset, rightfully so.
Is there a means of rating cities that have debt service that's in some kind of dashboard, yellow zone caution, debt service ratio with revenues? Is it what debt service is compared with?
It's, the, the statutory limitation is based on the amount of debt versus the value of your city.
Okay.
So there's a maximum statutory amount you can borrow. We're nowhere near that. So there isn't, that, that shouldn't be, there is no concern about reaching that statutory limit. It is really the, the will of this council to decide how much you can afford to repair.
Is assessed value then, all properties, residential and commercial?
Yeah, it's, yes, all value of the entire city.
Okay.
It does, though. The amount of borrowing does make a difference in our ratings, though, correct? Doesn't it have something to do with, with some of the...
Municipal ratings?
Yes.
If you have a lot of debt, then yes, when you go to borrow.
So when we go to borrow, we, correct. So it's another reason why we don't wanna borrow, like, overborrow and...
Right.
Yeah, we, we set this level, remember, Candy, like, three, four years ago? It was a kind of a idea where we thought.
Well, basically, what we're looking at is if we wanna move these projects up and get them done sooner, we need to look at borrowing more.
Correct.
That's, that's what we're...
All except for South Main. We gotta take that out of the equation because that's contingent on grant stuff.
Yes, South Main is included in this next borrowing.
Right, but I mean, if you say to move some of these things up, we should take South Main out of that moving up. Wouldn't you agree?
You would, what the, theoretically, you would do is if you borrowed more, one of these projects that's scheduled for the next borrowing, we'd move into this, into this, this borrowing.
I have a question regarding South Main here. You mentioned the 477, 102 is 20%. Contingent on, we get a 20-80 grant. So basically, the overall cost of that project, no grant, would be like 2.4 million?
Yeah, it's huge.
Okay.
And this, this does not include sewer and waters, includes storm sewer. So that, you know, the project is, you know, it's more expensive than the highways will be because of the, if we didn't get the grant, then redoing the highways would...
We, we really need to kinda wait out and see what goes on there.
That, that's why we continue to wait because it's so huge that it would totally change your capital budget if you, if you decided to move forward without that grant.
That South Main is from Casey's, old Walker's gas station way out to the cemetery. That's the big project out there. And that ties in the state or the county's doing from Highway 14 and F all the way up. You know, right through the Indian Ford Bridge now. So it's, it's a big project and we're part of it. At the next discussion, can we have the debt payment schedule?
Certainly.
So we can see where that, a few of them drop-offs come up in the next few years?
Yeah, 2027.
Yeah, it's a few years yet.
Yeah, that's when you have your significant change in your current debt service.
Couple of big projects are paid for then.
So I don't see Marlboro on here. Is that, I mean, I've just noticed since I've been going around that way a lot, that's getting a little messy. I don't know what to say. Potholes and stuff. That's not on here. Is that because it doesn't need to be or lighten me a little bit?
Part of it is the sewer and water is in suitable condition, Randy, correct? So that isn't pushing it, that's one.
Okay.
And the other would be is then, then it's just the street that would drive it and Tom Hartzell gets to decide the condition of the streets because he has to rate those, you know, rather here for the state. And as bad as it is, these are...
Okay, okay, that's what I was wondering.
Do you want every street around your house brand new?
I do.
I think that's why we need to go to an open election.
Had to get that shot, didn't it?
Want the streets taken care of before I get another vehicle. Just kidding. No, I, I was just wondering because I know there were some pretty deep dips in there, but I didn't know what the, the, the sewer and the water was like underneath there.
You know, you were about Chamberlain? We did that, you need to go up because water sewer was shot. That's why, that was one reason why we did it. So looking forward here to just dialogues?
She's looking for direction, but I don't...
I think this, I think you guys laid this out quite nicely. I like it. I'm a little concerned about going too much higher right now at this point. I mean, this, does this mean, I mean, we can always, we look at it again, right?
The final decision won't be made until you actually borrow in 19.
Yeah.
But as we get into budget, you know, this is the, the basis where you'll start your capital budget with the big projects because if you take any of these out or you decide you wanna try to pay with them through current levy, those are all the, you know, that's what we, that'll be part of your conversation at the next meeting when you talk about capital.
Okay, so then here's another question. And Kirsten, we had talked just a little bit, what, what happens with, 'cause I know there's some issues going on at, at the library, at the building, not with, you know? How does that play into some of this? So like if there's a big ticket item that, from a construction perspective at the library that needs to be done? I see we have the painting on here, but...
HVAC is one.
The HVAC, yeah.
It depends on the size of the project.
Okay.
I mean, when you get your next, the next step in our process, as you always have, is the capital requests. And so will all of those fit in your levy? As levy limits continue to limit what you have? You know, and operating increases, then you're gonna have less and less available to spend current cash on projects. And then it becomes, you have to borrow more if you're gonna do projects because you have no operating costs, operating available.
Yep.
So we'll, we'll put all of this together and if it looks like it's not gonna work, then you have to decide, do some of these projects slide because there are other priorities?
Or borrow more. Okay, good, thank you.
So Chris, you mentioned that we're gonna have your debt, some data at the next council meeting?
Yeah, we usually, we usually have that every, every budget process. We have an idea, but that's one that I like to look at. Okay, is that in on that? Anybody else have anything else to add?
Well, contingency, like Tom's server issue, that was a sudden expense that cropped up. It wasn't large, but there could be many of those all happening at once. So is that something that would be covered?
We budget a contingency every year, some money in contingency. And the, there's savings that we would use in an emergency. So we're in a position where we don't have to continue to levy money for unknowns. We do our best to plan. Certainly, things happen, but if we had no savings and we had no contingency every year in the budget, then you would be in a much different position, obviously. So the borrowing is really planned for long-term, large projects and then the rest of it, we all try to figure out as we go. And we're in a position where if we had to fix that server, we can fix that server because we have resources to do that.
Okay, anyone else? Next item is mayor, all the person in the staff reports. I've got a few things. School's open. I'm sure some of the neighbors know that now. Some of the neighbors that didn't expect it for a while, they'll probably get a little more foot traffic going down Randolph Street. Chili Mania's this weekend, Friday and Saturday downtown. And Police Chief Kubertans, congratulations. Thank you for your 28 years here. It's been, been some interesting times. Glad to have you. Chief's retiring next month, so...
He's gonna learn how to crochet, he told me.
It is okay to make it public.
Till we know?
Now.
Oh, he really didn't.
You asked me now.
Was it better to ask for forgiveness? He's not going for his gun, is he? Does anybody else have anything?
Pick words up my mouth. Happy, hopefully, people have a good Chili Mania if they happen to go downtown to help support the cause. They do a lot of scholarships for kids in high school with the money they make, so.
Well, thank you guys for your input on the, on the discussions on the agenda.
Thanks. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Well, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.